Prairie City Council will now come to order. I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Prior to the start of each council meeting, we allow an opportunity for citizens to address the council on items related to city business. Our meetings are typically the first and third Thurs- or Tuesdays of each month, and the open podium period of time is from approximately 6:30 to 6:55 here in the council chambers. If you wish to speak at that time, please call the city manager's office at (949) 8412 by noon of the meeting date with your name, your phone number, and the issue you wish to discuss. If time permits, after scheduled speakers, we have the opportunity for people to spontaneously address the council. Open podium is not recorded or televised. Again, if you have questions about open podium, please contact the city manager's office at (949) 8412. We're going to start out the meeting today with HRA meeting. I'd like to call that meeting to order. Roll call. Councilmember Aho?
Here.
Councilmember Butcher-Westrom?
Here.
Councilmember Case?
Here.
Councilmember Nelson?
Here.
Chair Tara Lukens? Here. The first item is to approve the minutes of the HRA meeting held on October 3rd of this year. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any corrections? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. The next item is to adopt a resolution certifying 2018 HRA property tax levy to be $200,000 and approving the 2018 HRA budget of $200,000. Mr. Getchell, do you want to add anything?
Just to add, members of the HRA, that the last meeting of the year, last HRA meeting of the year and council meeting of the year, the budget on levy need to be approved for both the HRA and the city. The request is for a levy of $200,000. That's been very consistent, the same levy for a number of years, if not more than a decade. It's a levy that you set preliminarily back in September. We actually talked about researching that levy in 2018, and we will do that but for 2019, but for 2018, we feel very comfortable with this levy once again to fund the needs of our housing and redevelopment authority.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Yes, I move to adopt a resolution certifying the 2018 HRA property tax levy to be $200,000 and approving the 2018 HRA budget of $200,000 as reviewed by the council.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned. Then we move into our city council meeting, and the first item that we have tonight is fire department awards and recognition. Ms. Chief Espenson?
Thank you, Mayor and council members. A lot of times, we don't get to show off the good deeds that happen and talk about a lot of great things, but tonight is one of those nights when we do, and I have joining me at the podium Chad Willard from the Huber Funeral Home. If you'll recall, back in early October, unfortunately, a plane crashed in the parking lot next to the Huber Funeral Home. Chad, not being concerned for his own well-being, heard the commotion, came out, saw that there was a plane down and a fire, went back in, grabbed a fire extinguisher, and attempted to help out and then secure the scene until fire and police arrived. And in recognition of him putting himself into harm's way, the fire department would like to issue him this award of recognition. And so I will read that. On October 4th, 2017, a small plane crashed in the parking lot of the Resurrection Life Church in Eden Prairie. Working nearby, Huber Funeral Home employee Chad Willard was the first on scene. Mr. Willard assessed the scene, notified authorities, utilized a fire extinguisher to help reduce the fire, and established a safe area until the Eden Prairie Fire Department arrived on scene. Mr. Willard's role in this emergency scene was invaluable. For his quick action and willingness to assist, the Eden Prairie Fire Department wishes to recognize Mr. Chad Willard.
You know, the only thing I'll close with is, you know, I'll accept this award on behalf of all the first responders, Eden Prairie Fire Department, Police Department, EMTs, and emergency personnel. Rick, I saw you there shortly after we were there, so, you know, on behalf of all your professional work, thank you.
Thank you again. All right. Next item on the agenda, is there a motion for approval of the agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
Any items to change, delete, add?
Your Honor, just one item under council member reports.
Okay. All in favor of the agenda amended?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Motion for approval of the council workshop minutes from Tuesday, November 14th. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections to those? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the city council meeting workshop, pardon me, of the city council meeting held that same date, Tuesday, November 14th?
Move approval.
Second.
Any corrections there? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Consent calendar, item A through J, is there a motion for approval?
I would move a, whoop. I would move approval of items A through J on the consent calendar.
Second.
Anything to pull for discussion or any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Our public hearing tonight, we start off with Shields. Mr. Getchell?
Thank you, Mayor and city council members. Yes, we are very pleased tonight to bring forward to you a major development project here in Eden Prairie on the site of the former Sears at the Eden Prairie Center, our mall. We have a proposal for a planned unit development concept review on approximately 20 acres and a first reading of an ordinance for a PUD with waivers on that same site for a new Shields store. As you know, there is currently a Shields within the mall, but this is an approximate 250,000 square foot new store that would be coming in at the Sears site at the Eden Prairie Mall. Notice of the public hearing was published in the November 30th edition of the Eden Prairie News, and this project was approved for recommendation by the Planning Commission. I do know that representatives of Shields and the developer are here for a pretty detailed presentation, so maybe without me going into some of the details of the project or staff, we could have the applicant provide a presentation, and then staff and the applicant could answer any questions that the city council may have prior to public hearing and action.
Okay, sounds good. Does applicant wish to come forward? Hi.
Hi, good evening, how are you?
Good.
Good. My name's Jeff Ploshe, and I'm with Arrow Retail. We're the company that put together the fund that acquired Eden Prairie Center a few years ago. We were extremely excited about the acquisition, but we had one main concern, and that was a north of 200,000 square foot Sears store that we knew would either go vacant fairly soon and perhaps stay vacant, or maybe be converted into something less desirable that was not conducive to retail. So it was, it was a true threat to our investment in the shopping center. So we approached Sears, we ended up, we were successful in negotiating an acquisition of the building and the 18.2 acres in conjunction with another store they had in Portland, Oregon. When we originally bought the Sears, we thought that we were going to tear down a portion of the building, and we were gonna, we were gonna build about 157,000 square feet of additional retail, spec retail, junior box anchor. We started talking to your typical tenants like the TJ Maxes and Marshalls and Dicks of the world, and at the same time, we started running a parallel path with Shields, talking about the potential of them doing one of their prototype flagship stores. After evaluating both scenarios, we felt that for the benefit of our investment, and we thought the community as well, that Shields that draws from 150 mile radius would be the route to go to help our, you know, improve and keep our investment safe. So that's what we decided to do. Having said that, I'd like to introduce Kirk Williams, who's our Director of Development. Just say a few words, thank you.
Mayor, council members, my name's Kirk Williams. I'm with Cypress Equities. Do y'all need my address?
No.
Typical, okay. I've been hired, or Cypress Equities has been hired with regards to being the developer on the property and to work very closely with the owner, both in the entitlement process but also the construction process. Now, as Jeff mentioned, the retail business has been fairly difficult over the past few years. I don't, we don't need to go into that, I think everybody's keenly aware of that. Now, it was made even more difficult when we found out that Sears was going to be closing, but fortunately, and we're excited that the owner took the step to acquire the interest in the Sears box, because that would allow us to control the decisions of what went there. Now, Jeff also mentioned, our first reaction is to go into the market and start to look at the different opportunities that exist, and that's what we see in the market, as Jeff alluded to, that's the discounters is the first you look at, because they're the ones that are very active in retail, but are they the best? Are those exactly who we want? The next is grocery, food and beverage, but also entertainment, and then there's active lifestyle, which what we call fitness, and then also is health and beauty. And we went through, and we looked at these, what would be the right fit for the mall? What would be the right fit for the property, and dare I say, what'd be the right fit for the community at large? And we went through this, because what we're looking at is ownership realized that we needed to provide an experience, a winsome, a fun, an energetic experience that you can't get online, something that drives people inside, not just to the property, not just into the retail stores, but into the mall, somewhere to go that's fun when it's cold. And being from Dallas, I like being inside when it's cold. But it's, it's something to do, and when we started looking at that, this was something that would relate to the community at large, and to drive from a larger area to bring dollars here, and then to help drive sales and to continue to create that community. The goal was to find that perfect answer to replace an antiquated Sears store with something new and exciting. And Shields was selected by ownership to be that exact fit, because we believe not only does it bring a valuable brand to Eden Prairie, but also offering the entertainment and a festive, festive atmosphere in doing so. With that, I want to introduce you to the man who can tell you all about Shields, and that being Jason Lonely. Jason?
Is there a ready-to-communicate on the screen?
Yes.
Okay.
Camera will pull it up.
Okay. So on behalf of 6,000, over 6,000 Shields associates who are anxiously awaiting what happens tonight, I say Merry Christmas and thank you for having us. And, you know, we came to Eden Prairie Center almost 11 years ago with a concept of shoes and clothing. It's a unique concept, it's one of a kind in our chain, we don't have anything like it. All the others are really more of the full-line sporting good with entertainment mixed in, something for the entire family, really destination retail. And what we try to do is, is figure out a way to capture the customer from the moment that they enter the parking lot. And as you can see, this is a picture from our Billings location from a couple of years ago. So, you know, we like to have kind of the grand entrance that you see at the, with the peak of the store, lush landscaping, bronze statues as you're walking towards to really start capturing the atmosphere of sport and entertainment. And this is some more of the statues that we have in our store in Kansas. As you walk in the store, you'll be greeted by a 16,000 gallon saltwater aquarium, complete with staff divers and about 700 fish that kids and adults alike love to watch and enjoy throughout any moment of the day. The center of the store will be a 44, 45 foot tall Ferris wheel, operating Ferris wheel that you can come in and ride for merely a dollar a person, just a real inexpensive experience for the entire family. We'll have a restaurant inside, serving soup, salad, sandwich, 24 flavors of fudge, Bavarian almonds, Starbucks coffee, and then fitness center right next door. This is our, an example of our shoe shops. You know, the average shoe shop at Shields has over 6,000 styles of shoes on display, men's, women's, and kids. So when we talk about footwear, we're not talking about fashion, sport, we're talking about all encompassing footwear. We have a home decor shop, which is similar to a William &amp; Sonoma or Pottery Barn, a wildlife, taxidermy mountain, along with camping, hunting, fishing, firearms, a try before you buy archery lanes, you can come in and test out the bow or have the bow worked on by a bow tech and then enter into the lane and make sure that the tweaks that they made are going to work to your liking. And then you get into the entertainment aspects of it. We have bowling, we have a 70% scale airplane that'll be in the store, we'll have shooting arcades, just a wide variety of opportunities for young and old to come and spend a little bit of time or spend a lot of time at Shields. But, you know, in addition to the retail aspect of it, what Eden Prairie will gain by getting a larger Shields experience is 400 new jobs, which will, you know, be part of that center, as well as all of our stores give 10% of our profits back to the community every year, and with the Shields Foundation even more. Well, when you have just a small store, that 10% doesn't necessarily go very far, but as you, you know, get into the larger store and with a larger profile, the amount that we're able to contribute back to the community in not only dollars but volunteer hours and other amenities will considerably be enhanced with the process. At this time, I'll turn it over to Tiffany from RL &amp; Breton to talk about the development board.
Thank you. Thank you, Jason. If we could get the slideshow back up, talk a little bit about the building. The first slide here, just to again, to get everybody oriented with the site and the project, we have an aerial view of the existing Sears and its location to the Eden Prairie This is the same aerial view showing the outline of the building footprint with the main entry and also the mall entry highlighted. This aerial view is of the overall site plan, including the proposed Shields building and the extent of the parking lot improvements for this project. As Jason spoke, when Shields joins a community, they make a long-term commitment. That commitment shows in its stores, which are built with longevity and permanence in mind, using high-quality materials that stand the test of time. Approximately a third of the new 2,480, 248,800 gross square feet Shields building is retained and repurposed from the approximate 205,000 square foot former Sears building. Throughout the rest of the slideshow, as the image is showing up here, we have intermixed photos of the existing conditions with the new images with the proposed building and/or landscape design on those. This image here is of the southwest, northwest corner of the existing Sears store viewed from Franlow Road near Firestone. This is a similar perspective. This rendered image here is of the proposed two-level Shields store with a prominently featured pitched roof over a central clear story space, skylights, clear story windows, and vertical glazing. The building massing is articulated with strong geometric forms, varying vertical planes, and cornice and parapet features. The roof height shown in this image and other images within the presentation range from 83 foot six at the highest point of the pitched roof to the, excuse me, to the various parapet heights ranging from 44 feet to approximately 15, 56 feet above finished floor. Not only do the varying roof heights go with the design guidelines, but they also help accommodate the Ferris wheel within the building and also rooftop screen, screening on top of the building. The exterior complies with City Code for Class 1 and Class 2 exterior materials by using a palette of brick, stone, glass, ephes, metal panels in an array of patterns, textures, and colors. The northwest facade houses one of the 5' 11" high signs shown here on the corner of the building. This image here is of the existing southwest side of the Sears store. Again, from a similar perspective, this rendered image shows a, excuse me, shows the Shields southwest entrance facing the main traffic route of Prairie Center Drive. The entrance is defined by two stone piers framing large glazed openings, pitched roof, and canopies. This facade has the other 5' 11" building sign as well as a 3-foot canopy sign. This is the building's focal point and clearly orients visitors to the entrance. Steeply pitched roofs are a prominent feature of many Shields stores. The use of skylights, clear story windows, and vertical glazing illuminate an expansive clear story space, inviting visitors both during the day and at night into a vibrant and fun interior. A pedestrian scale is created with sculptures of people engaged in sporting activities, benches with statues of past presidents, extensive landscaping, pathways, and accent lighting. The front plaza has spaces for bicycle parking and will use a radiant heat system under sidewalks to remove snow and ice during the winter season. I would now like to introduce Erica Christensen to talk a little bit more about the landscape of this site.
Good evening, everyone. If we could get the presentation back? Great, this is a great place for me to pop in, talk about the landscape in a little bit more detail. We're going to jump back out here in scale and talk a little bit about the parking lot. We have basically expanded our revision of the parking lot beyond the 18.2 acre Sears parcel, because of the boundaries of the parking lot go all the way up to the edges that you see today. We have increased the greening and really used the design guidelines that are recently adopted this year from Eden Prairie to help guide us, and our goal with the parking lot is to maintain our required parking ratio of 4.5 per thousand while adding this greening. And in addition, we worked really hard with staff to try to accommodate pedestrian and bicycle access from across the ring road. We worked with Shields in the beginning to develop some of the interior islands, these longer islands that will capture people parking within the lot itself just heading to Sears, but then we, excuse me, Shields, but we have a couple extra paths in there. So we can talk a little bit more about that, there may be follow-up questions. I want to draw your attention, though, to one of the other amenities that we're providing here, which is the new and improved entry along the northwest side of Shields. So right now, it is a blank facade because of the existing building, but we're trying to provide this connection and really wrap the Shields experience around the outside, kind of draw you around the corner with a few extra sculptures. They do quite a bit outside as part of their standard anchor stores. Tiffany mentioned the lush landscaping, quite a robust palette that they typically provide with their stores. As you move towards the mall entry, which is near Talbot's and Barnes &amp; Noble, we continue to add different species and really focus in on a different story. So we transition from the Shields diversity, and we're now with these planters that we're implementing here, going to talk about a different story. So here is that facade that I'm talking about. Again, in the series that Tiffany started, this is the existing, and then this is generally the same area of the proposed. So we have a widened area along the sidewalk here where the sporting sculptures exist. We have a pedestrian corridor that is demarcated by a different paving pattern, starts to break down in scale a little bit. We're doing some bands of exposed aggregate, a little bit more texture with the scoring. We also have delineated the pedestrian path with light poles. This is an existing type of pole on the mall, and we're using a slightly different base, bigger base, as well as some planters to help kind of edge in the pedestrian zone. And as we continue down this path closer to the mall entry, our planter has a wall that is also a seat, and we are now going to focus in on a couple different eco-types. We want to tell the story about one of the bigger sustainability moments on this project, which is the recycling of a lot of the runoff on site. So we have to treat, and we will be reusing that in the irrigation for this. So there's an opportunity here for us to tell that story. This is a different view, as if you were standing kind of in front of Barnes &amp; Noble looking back towards the entry. So there is another smaller planter, that's a smaller space, but again, another opportunity. Not as many pedestrians will use this way, but we feel like we want to continue this idea around the corner and really brand this zone. Looking at the other entry of the existing Sears, this is up towards the food court. So now I've whipped you all the way around the building, and this will no longer be an entry, this is just an exit, but another area for a Shields sign, and also adding that depth in gardening and planting along that edge. So you can start to see in this perspective, the entrance of the food court there. And then we'll go way out, this is the Franlow Road intersection, and the entry sign, the wayfinding sign. We have worked with the city and council before on other, on the other landscaping project around the west side, so we already have a template for what we will do here. This is a rendering of it at mature height, staggered evergreens, some lower shrubs and grasses, rock out crappings, and then I took a picture of this this summer, so this is a pretty recent installation, so this is what it looks like when it goes in, you never really see that from designers. But I think it's a nice start, and will continue to be the template as we go around the ring road. So right now, if we could hop out, we want to end with the movie that shows you a little bit more of the dynamic experience of this. And that is all we have, so as Rick said, we will answer your questions as we can. Thank you.
It's a drone view.
Okay, questions? Looks wonderful. Does? Council, any questions? I'm sorry, I don't have the lights on. Councilmember Nelson, why don't you go ahead?
Okay. Um, I've got one question. There already had been a small incident that sort of grew out of proportion with a man bringing a rifle into, or a gun of some kind into the store to potentially be fixed. Are you going to have a door that's more specific for people to bring firearms in? You know, if they want to be fixed, obviously, they have a certain area that they leave, but I'm, I'm positive you don't want the mall shut down two or three times a day. And I assume you thought this out and have figured something out, but what is it?
What it is, is we should have gotten the store built two years earlier. It probably wouldn't have happened. We have 12 stores that are in attached malls, and, and so the way that, you know, we've taken several people from the city through the process, but firearm owners would come in the main entrance of our store, and if they brought a gun in to be repaired, to be traded, they'd be directed to the gun shop. And at the same time, if they were to purchase a firearm, they, that firearm would be purchased at the gun shop on second floor and would be escorted to at the gun shop on second floor and would be escorted to the front door for them from one of our personnel. And if they had more shopping to do, we could leave it in the gun shop, and they can shop, or if they wanted to put it in their vehicle and lock it up, they could do that as well. But honestly, this situation that happened has never happened in one hundred and fifteen years of being in business at Shields where we've had that type of incident.
So you are doing your best to direct people with either repair needs or trade needs or whatever into the proper door so that they don't wander around the mall looking for it?
Correct. And I think most firearm owners would know to go into the store directly from the exterior entrance.
You would hope so.
You would hope so.
Thank you.
One question I had, maybe not for you, maybe for the landscape architect, Erica. Are there bike racks going in anywhere?
Yes, so there are new bike racks. Shields has a lot of experience with this, so they're of a selection that they use a lot, and there is a series of them sort of on that front facade. And we could go back to the presentation if you'd like to see, but then there is also a series of them at that widened corner where the four sculptures are sort of around the corner to try to capture that intersection where people might be converging.
So how many sculptures are there in all?
Eight.
Eight? Okay. Yeah, many of us-
Oh, there's twelve. Oh, there's twelve. There's four large ones in the front. Four life-size president sitting on benches in the front as well. And then there's one and a half time size four around the corner. So there's quite a bit of-
I'm just curious, when we go to these meetings that they have for council members, there are often exhibitors, and there are some exhibitors that make bike racks that have sports themes. Is that the type of bike rack you get?
You know, these are not branded Shields, but they're a really robust bike rack that people with very expensive bikes like because they're highly secured. That's what I meant, more than a branded bike rack. But I know what you mean, I've seen them at the Twin Stadium, and so this is a little different. This is more for people who might be bringing their very nice-
Probably, probably a good idea.
They're very user-friendly, it's just that based on experience from who comes with bikes to their shops, that's what we're using.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to comment, too, the picture with the night lighting on the building, it looks beautiful. I think the whole thing looks outstanding, I'm really pleased with how the outside landscaping looks and with the materials that are used on the building. And, I don't know, personally, I feel it's going to be a huge draw to the mall. I think somebody mentioned, was it Jeff, you said something about a draw of one hundred and fifty miles, it might be more than that when people hear about it. It looks really nice. Councilmember Aho?
Yeah, so I just wanted to talk a little bit about timing. So if this is approved today, which I assume there shouldn't be too much trouble because it does look like a fantastic project, what would you anticipate for start of construction and opening of the store? And what would that construction, you know, period look like? I mean, are you going to have to shut down any of the roadways, or, you know, what is your anticipation on that?
The construction will start, the demolition will start in February, that's a planned start, and the store will be open in September of two thousand and nineteen. Jason, yes?
Nineteen or eighteen?
Nineteen. Two thousand and nineteen.
All right, did you-
It's just under a two-year process. It's going to be right at about nineteen months.
And do you anticipate that any of the, is part of the construction process, that, like the ring road or anything, there's going to be any disruption of service on those roads?
We will have a phased plan on the ring road, both the outer ring road and the inner ring road, but there will be some improvements made coming up to that ring road, but they will be very well signed and very well guarded in regards to both pedestrians and vehicles going through there. But there will be some disruption to the parking field, obviously, as we go through a full parking lot. The whole area there is just under ten acres of paving that's going to get redone, so it's considerable, and it's quite an undertaking. But we've got tenants that we have to listen to as well because we don't want to disrupt them too, so we've got a very carefully planned phasing element of how that parking's going to minimally disrupt their operation.
Good, thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions? This is a public hearing, is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on the Shields development?
Seeing none, I would move to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution for a planned unit development concept review on approximately twenty acres and approve the first reading of an ordinance for planned unit development district review with waivers on approximately twenty acres, and direct staff to prepare a development agreement incorporating staff and commission recommendations and council conditions, and authorize staff to issue an early land alteration permit for Shields at the request of the developer subject to applicable conditions.
Second?
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. I would say welcome, but you already have a store here, but we're looking forward to the expansion, it should be great. And thank you for all of your hard work, working with our staff, and thank you to our staff for accomplishing this great job.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay, the next item tonight is a resolution certifying the two thousand and eighteen property tax levy and adopting the two thousand and eighteen budget and approving the two thousand and eighteen HRA tax levy. Mr. Getchel?
Thank you, Baron Council. Yes, as I mentioned during our very efficient HRA meeting, that we also have action tonight to approve our tax levy and budget for two thousand and eighteen. As is customary, we hold the public hearing, and prior to that, Finance Manager Sukachiver and I like to provide a presentation on the budget. So if we could, we'd like to provide an overview on our budget and levy and then hold a public hearing, and then the requested action is the resolution before you to certify the two thousand and eighteen property tax levy and budget.
Good evening, council, our mayor, council members, staff, and citizens. We're pleased, can you hear me? Pleased to present the two thousand and eighteen proposed budget. The purpose of the meeting is to solicit public input on the proposed budget and tax levy for next year. It is a requirement of state law that we have the meeting, and it's held after property owners receive their proposed property tax statement. There are other public meetings on other organizations' budgets as well. So Hennepin County had their meeting on November twenty eighth, the Eden Prairie Schools had theirs last night, the Met Council will have theirs tomorrow night, and the State of Minnesota, which is the state's general property tax, they do not have a public meeting. This is the history of the market value of the property within the city of Eden Prairie. You can see in two thousand and nine, the property value was at, just at ten million dollars, and then with the Great Recession, we had a decline in property values, and it has slowly started to go back up, and now we are at ten point two million, or billion, thank you, ten point two billion in market value. So we are at a peak again, which is great news. This is a summary of the total budget that we'll be talking about tonight. The total budget's going up four, thank you, four point one percent. The general fund is also going up four point one percent. Our debt levy is remaining flat at two million five hundred and fifty-three thousand, and the capital levy is going up a hundred thousand dollars. This is a summary of the proposed revenues for the general fund, and I'll briefly go through each line item. Taxes are going up three point nine percent. Licenses and permits are going up five point six percent. That includes about a hundred and thirty thousand of development revenue. We increase development revenue six percent every other year, and it also includes about fifty thousand of cable TV revenue. Intergovernmental revenue, which is revenue from other governmental entities, is remaining flat. We're actually increasing it sixty thousand for some police training funds that we're receiving from the state, but then we're decreasing it for some municipal state aid that we will no longer be receiving in the general fund, but we've also been able to reduce expenditures by that amount. Charges for services is going up six point nine percent. Most of that is attributable to the community center, about three hundred thousand dollars. The community center has been very successful and continues to do well, and about forty thousand of that is related to youth programs, and the remaining is for other revenues. Fines and forfeits is being decreased a little bit, that revenue source has moderated and slowed down in recent years, so we needed to adjust that to reflect what we've actually been collecting. Other revenue is increasing by twenty thousand dollars, and transfers in is increasing as we are charging the utility funds now for some of the administrative overhead in the administration, city manager, finance, human resources, and communications. And this is a pie chart of the percentage of revenue for each one of the sources of revenue. Property taxes is seventy-three percent of the budget, and that's very stable, and it's always been right within that every single year. Charges for services is thirteen percent, licenses and permits is eight percent, and then the rest makes up about six percent of the revenue. And this is a summary of expenditures. Expenditures are going up four point one percent, and I'll highlight a little bit about each area. Administration's increase of seven point six percent is primarily attributable to elections. Also, there's some increases for some software purchases for communications and human resources. Also, there's ten thousand dollars in there for the energy audits that the city is doing in partnership with Excel Energy. Community development is increasing two point six percent, and that's primarily related to wages and benefits. Parks and Recreation is increasing seven point one percent. A lot of that is due to the community centers, so they've been doing really well, and so they have added some costs for some more part-time wages at the fitness center, also facility charges, they're having more cleaning that's going on with the activity at the community center, and also for supplies and pool supplies and that sort of thing. Also, park maintenance is going up, their wages and benefits, and also some of the other recreation programs have small increases. Police is going up four point nine percent, and a lot of that is wages and benefits, and then also various other areas, clothing and uniforms, prisoner board is going up, and a variety of other areas. Fire is going up four point one percent, and a majority of that is the increased payment to the fire relief pension fund, and also for duty crew wages, and the increases there are offset by some decreases in user charges for IT. Those costs have been going down for fire. And then Public Works is going down as we have reallocated some of the employees' costs who work in Public Works, they are actually spending time in utilities, they were really utility employees, so we're charging the utilities for those costs and decreasing those costs in the general fund. And this is a summary of the percentage of budget in each area, so police is thirty-two percent, park and recreation twenty-six, fire and public works are both thirteen percent, administration ten percent, community development five percent, and transfers one percent. This is a summary of our debt levy, as I mentioned, it's the same from each year. Our debt levy is currently very stable, and we project that it should be stable going forward in the future. Proposed tax levy, so the levy is going up three point nine percent proposed, four point one for the general fund. The capital levy is going up a hundred thousand, and that capital levy gets put into a general capital fund that helps to pay for capital funds throughout the city, includes a lot of park maintenance and park projects and public safety projects and those sorts of things. And again, the debt levy, and when you decrease for fiscal disparities, the total levy is increasing three point nine percent. So this is a summary of then the city tax impact based on the current proposed budget for residential property valued at three hundred and seventy-eight thousand one hundred, which is the median value home in Eden Prairie, which is a three point four percent increase over the previous year. The increase is forty-four dollars or three point six percent. For an apartment valued at five million dollars, the increase is two thousand ninety-three dollars or eleven point two percent. And for commercial property, it's increasing seventy-six dollars or point nine percent. And for the total property tax impact, which includes the city, the county, the school district, and other taxing districts, residential's going up a total of a hundred and forty-one dollars or two point nine percent, apartments seven thousand four hundred thirty-two or ten point three percent, and the commercial is going down nine hundred and sixty-two dollars or one point four percent. So this is the property tax distribution then on a median value home. So for a median value home, twenty-five percent of the property taxes that you pay will go to the city, and thirty-four percent will go to the county, and thirty-four percent to the school district, and then the remaining is the other taxing districts. And for the property tax distribution on a commercial property, actually, the biggest area that where property taxes go to is fiscal disparities at thirty-one percent, the state general tax at twenty-four percent, the county at sixteen, the school district at fourteen, and then the city of Eden Prairie collects twelve percent of property taxes for commercial property. So this is the monthly cost of city services. So the total monthly cost is a hundred and four dollars and fifty-eight cents, and then broken out between the general fund of ninety-six fifty-five and eight dollars and three cents for debt and capital. And then this breaks it down by each one of the departments, the monthly cost of service. So police is at thirty seventy-one, park and recs twenty-five eighty, fire twelve ninety-four, public works twelve forty-eight, administration nine fifty-three, and community development five oh nine. And now Mr. Getchel will take over.
Thanks, Sue. I think one thing to mention, I just maybe take things, maybe up, you know, to a ten thousand foot level and talk a little bit about process quickly. Sue gave quite a bit of detail about the budget for next year and the action tonight, some of those details. But as you know, and I think we want to continue to tell the community, this is part of a two-year process, and it involves the gathering of a lot of information and a lot of discussion. So actually, what was put together was a two-year budget, a two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and nineteen budget. Your action tonight is on two thousand and eighteen, but I'm going to share some information about two thousand and nineteen as well. But it actually began earlier this spring, as it does every other year, with an evaluation of some of our community survey results. We have some statistically significant data that we ask our residents and receive about the services that we deliver at the level that we deliver them, and the, you know, the feeling of taxation that's provided, and spending as well. We then spend some time in spring at city council workshops discussing those results and building a budget, and actually, this is a document that you've seen. This is the planning of all the different divisions and departments that was brought to you earlier this year, and that's a two-year work plan that provides some detail on all the different specific goals and strategies that every department's going to accomplish that then gets built into the budget. And that budget then is developed over the summer, and that's where you spend some time in your workshops discussing what that budget should be. You get to September, and as Sue said, you set a preliminary levy for approval at the end of the year. It's a levy that you can, in a budget, you can only decrease, you cannot increase it. And I think for the past seven years, the budget and the levy that was set in September is the budget and levy you've taken action on in December as well. So that brings us to tonight's meeting. We also have tried, we've also tried budget engagement as well in a lot of different varieties. You can go back to open houses and in public hearings, and we view City Connect. This year, I think we had some success actually using our city Facebook page, and on a pretty regular basis, we put out some trivia, some different questions to our community about spending and services provided in different departments, and asked people to answer the trivia question, and then had a drawing with the winner receiving an I Love EP t-shirt. And I think when it was all said and done, and we did that engagement, we actually reached several hundred people. We reached more people than I think we had at any previous public hearing or budget meeting because we're trying to use some technology or social media, at least get some information out there in the way maybe people want to receive it. So we did get some feedback in that regard. When it comes to the survey, I just want to mention really quickly, you were given results of the survey earlier this year, but it does play a really important role on what type of budget is set in Eden Prairie, and we did- And we did see that the quality of life rated good or excellent amongst our residents is still very high in getting some of the highest ratings in the country. And when you look at our community characteristics, what makes up Eden Prairie? It is an overall feeling of safety in this community that we continue to put a priority on, a high level of economic health, excellent built environment, a natural environment we want to build upon, and ease of getting around the community and offering health wellness and proper opportunities for our residents. A goal in Eden Prairie is actually to build our sense of community, and it's still something that we want to work on, but we did see over the last two years, higher ratings in sense of community. And the findings of our survey that led to building the budget is we do have a high quality of life that residents come to expect in Eden Prairie, a very strong economic base in Eden Prairie. Traffic is a concern. I think traffic is more related to not movement within the community, but from community to community. And also, we're seeing people engaging more in Eden Prairie on social media, on our city website, so that's important to keep investing in that and to communicate that way. And then finally, as I mentioned before, safety is a really important facet of our community. So, the goals that we set for the city budget are very similar to what have been set community-wide. We've been focused on, focusing on six main values for the last two or three years, and that is providing a high-level quality of services and then doing it in a sustainable and innovative way, remaining, retaining and building on our economic vitality and building our sense of community. So, when you look at the budget for the next two years, if you had to really put one sentence on what we're doing here, it's providing a value to our citizens by maintaining high-quality services with reasonable tax impacts. And I'll share a little bit of what those tax impacts are in a second, but maintaining our strong financial position as a city means maintaining our triple bond rating. It means having a balanced budget, maintaining fund balance policies, being conservative on the revenues you bring in and your expenditures, meaning that each and every year for the past many years, having more revenue than you budgeted for and less expenditures. And then reviewing all of your fees and adjusting as needed, that's the next two public hearings we have tonight. And finally, always planning ahead and looking ahead with capital planning, evenly financing your capital planning over a 10- or 20-year period. As you can see, you saw the debt levy is one big screen of zeros, so that's a matter of trying to, we do have low debt in Eden Prairie, but we do have some debt. We have a capital fund, and we're trying to maintain a level source of funding there. And then also sustaining high levels of engagement and morale amongst our employees to continue to find those efficiencies and innovations. It's actually, it's our workforce that, that makes this all happen. It's the people that work here that are every, each and every day, providing the high level of services. They know best ideas on how to deliver those services. They come up with some of the best ideas, so we need to competitively pay those employees and provide a very excellent work environment for them to work in. And then the last couple of slides are, again, that general overview of the levy and budget. Sue mentioned, you know, we have a levy proposal of 3.9% and a budget of 4.1. We built a two-year budget, so actually, if you look forward to 2019, even though you're not taking action on that, you see a levy and a budget that over these two years averaged closer to 3.5%. And also, if you look over the past 10 years in Eden Prairie, our average levy is actually lower than 2%, and our budget average is slightly over 2%, including those numbers. So, again, that concept of high level of service, not high taxation. And that plays out amongst several of our comparable communities, communities of similar size and type. We are continuing to be in the lowest quartile, I would say, in the bottom, you know, 15% or 20% on city taxes. We can only control that one-fourth of your tax bill, the 25% of the tax bill that, that we discussed, and in that portion of your tax bill, we are very competitive in the region. And that continues to be the case. And then, the last thing I'll mention is with fiscal disparities, Sue talked about that. It's a very unique program that exists in the seven-county metro area. All the cities in the seven-county metro area contribute a portion of their commercial tax-based growth, not residential, but commercial, retail, office, goes into a pool, and then there's a redistribution of those funds throughout the metro. And next to Bloomington, we are the number-two contributor or giver to that program. We actually ship out some of our tax revenue to, in that commercial growth area, to other communities. And if that program did not exist, so we're not passing judgment on if that program should end or not, actually, our own state representative, Representative Lewin, has been working with the city council regarding some legislation to possibly reevaluate and tweak and take a look at that program. I won't get into that at this discussion. But if that program did not exist, the, the residential property tax in the median-valued home would be 5.4% less than what it is now. So, it's just a matter of being transparent and sharing what effect that program has on the taxpayers in Eden Prairie. So, finally, what are the outcomes of this budget? It's maintaining a service, high-level services to our 63,000 residents and over 2,000 businesses in all those areas that we went through, department by department. So, with that, Mayor and City Council, we can certainly answer any questions you may have, and we are required to have a public hearing on the proposed levy and budget for 2018.
Any questions for Mr. Getchow?
I just have one because some of us were surprised by the city tax levy comparison chart. Is that city taxes based on a $378,000 home, which is the average home for Eden Prairie, or is it their community's average-priced home?
It's a great question. That's, that, that is the value across all those communities. So, it's a 300, that's the, that's a similar value in all those cities.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone on, in the audience that wants to address the council on the budget? And the levy? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion?
I would move to adopt a resolution certifying the 2018 property tax levy to be $37,149,820 and approve the 2018 budget of $48,648,652 as reviewed by the council, and approve the HRA tax levy and budget of $200,000.
Second. Any discussion, Mr. Aho?
I just, I just want to say that I think the staff did a good job in putting, crafting the budget and in keeping in mind all the goals and vision that we have as a council and looking at what our residents expect in terms of services, and so I think they did a great job. I'm not real pleased that it's a 4.1% budget increase this year, but knowing that we have next year is going to be a lesser increase than, and when you average it out over those two years, I think it's, it's a reasonable solution, so I'm very much in, in favor.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed, motion passes. Thank you. The next item is the 2018 fee schedule ordinance. Mr. Ellis or Mr. Getchow are going to introduce it?
I'll handle these, yeah. So, the, we have a couple of public hearings related to our fees. Mr. Ellis is going to help on this in a little bit, but this, these, this item would be the changes in all our fees that are by ordinance. So, we have, and we do this, this is typical for every year, that we evaluate building permit fees, engineering fees, fees for land use development, similar to what we saw with, with Shields tonight. So, all those proposed fees, which are typically within the inflation or less, unless there's a, a major evaluation that you find something different across different communities, and there's nothing that stands out that I can mention, the fees need to be approved following a public hearing and an update by ordinance. The one addition this year is we proposed a public hearing for an update of our utility franchise fees, so that's another item of discussion that's been ongoing with the council throughout the year. The utility franchise fees are something that we imposed a little over five years ago, and we agreed that in every five-year period, we would examine those fees and make any adjustments. So, we have a proposal to increase utility franchise fee in addition to these other fees, and Mr. Ellis is going to provide a brief presentation on the franchise fee piece tonight prior to the public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor and City Council, first let me apologize because I know this is the third time you've heard this presentation, but there may be some people at home that would benefit from hearing this as well. So, to begin, I just want to emphasize that when we talk about franchise fees, we have to also talk about pavement management because franchise fees are the primary funding source for maintaining our network of roads across the city. I do have a presentation here. I also want to begin a little bit on the pavement management background. So, we have a little over 228 centerline miles of streets. I think that number might be a little bit outdated, but we have a very large network of, of streets, residential, collector, arterial. The average age of our roads now is, is just getting to midlife, 30 years. And we do know that if we continue to be aggressive with our pavement management, we can get 60-plus years of life out of our roadway. And the type of treatments that we look at are kind of a broad, broad spectrum of different types of treatments. There's the, the more affordable pavement maintenance, which would be crack seal, seal coat, fog seal. We also do a number of projects where we do mill and overlays, or we do underseals of roads. We call that our repair maintenance. We start seeing a little bit more aggressive treatments, a little bit more costly treatments when we do major rehab, which would include full-depth reclamation. And then finally, when a street has reached the end of its useful life, we do a reconstruction. All of these treatments are primarily funded with our pavement management funds, which are indirectly the franchise fee revenue that we generate. And so, I know you've seen this in the past as well, but when you take a look at the program that the city of Eden Prairie has instituted for pavement management, if you look at this pavement age, so zero to 60-plus years, and you take a look at your pavement condition index, which is a score of what the quality of the road is, 100 being the best, a brand-new road, and then zero being a completely failed road, we know that if you have an aggressive pavement management program, like we do here in Eden Prairie, when you install your road, and if you plan on every seven to 10 years doing a seal coat, crack sealing, and then at year 20, a mill and overlay, as your road condition decreases over time, you can bring it back. You can rejuvenate the life of that road, and you can extend that period of time that the road will stay in service upwards of 60-plus years. We also know that if you don't do any maintenance to your roadway, if you essentially build the road and let it sit until it fails, you're looking at about a 25- to 30-year life out of that roadway. So, you can double, or even more than double, the life of your road if you do preventative maintenance through a pavement management program, and that's the road that we've chosen to go in Eden Prairie. And our goal that we've established is to keep the average pavement condition index in a very good or better condition. And right now, I think if we did our assessment in 2017, we'd find we're right around 80, so in the middle of the road, maybe slightly past the middle of the very good condition. So, we can achieve that goal. We also know when we talk franchise fees, a little bit of the background, we have over 100 cities now, on my last count, 100 cities have a franchise fee through their energy provider. So, it's very common practice. Some have chosen to do a flat rate, like the city of Eden Prairie has, and it ranges from $1 to $7 per month per utility. And some cities have chosen to go with a percentage of monthly sales, anywhere from 1.5% to 5%. So, there's two different methods of collecting that franchise fee, and we've chosen to go with the flat fee, and I think that's the most universal. When you take a look at how the franchise fees are used across other cities, some of them goes directly to general fund to support general operating, some use it for trail and sidewalks, but I'd say the majority probably use it for pavement management. We also evaluated, because we do keep very good records of the condition of our roads over time, and if you take a look going back to 1995 through today, and even projecting it into the future to 2028, the condition of our, the average condition of our roadway system, you can see that it used to be in that very good, or the excellent category, the dark green at the top, almost a 90 PCI for an average, and then it's dipped a little bit, but it's held in that very good category here for the most recent past. We have seen that it's dipping slightly here in the last couple of years. So, we took an evaluation, what type of revenue stream would we need to keep it in the very good, or even start bumping back towards excellent, where we'd seen back in the late 1990s? And we evaluated a number of scenarios, a franchise fee of 250, what it is today, so you see that's the bottom line. If we held our franchise where they have been for the last five years and project that out into the future, that's what we had anticipated seeing for pavement conditions. And then we took a look at scenario at 3, 350, 4, and 450. And the recommendation that was provided previously at city council workshops was to move from 250 per month per utility to the $4 per month per utility for the next five-year period. And then I also want to highlight that there are other classifications because XL Energy, CenterPoint Energy, Minnesota Valley Electric Cooperative have different classes of customers, and so we have different rates for those classes. This is the 250 and the $4, that would be for the residential classification. There's also a commercial industrial A, a commercial industrial B, and a commercial industrial C, and it all depends on how much electricity or energy they're using. So, commercial industrial A might be a small office, could be like an insurance company, something of that nature. I think they use from 0 to 25 kilowatts of energy if you're looking at the electricity side. Commercial industrial B might be Cold Stone Creamery, maybe a mid-level office, and then your commercial industrial C would be a water treatment plant, Eaton, Emerson, those larger, high-demand corporations. And so, the, the rate structure for those, currently, commercial industrial A is at $3, we're proposing to go to $5 for that. Commercial industrial B, $10 to $12.50, and then commercial industrial C, $45 to $55. Now, I will say, the bulk of the customers for CenterPoint, Minnesota Valley, XL, 90% roughly are residential. The final 10% are making up some portion of that A, B, and C. And I also want to point out, if you're talking a townhome, condominiums, those are residential. Some apartments can be residential too, so if they have, if it's an account with an apartment complex, and there's 100 units in there, and they have one meter, they might classify that as a commercial, so they'd get the one invoice for a commercial rate, $5, maybe it's $12.50. They don't multiply that times 100 and then send the bill out, so just so there's clarification on that. Now, if the apartment has individual meters for all 100 units, then they would get a residential rate for each of those individual accounts, so that's how that would work on higher-density residential. And I believe that concludes my presentation. Of course, if you have any questions, I will answer those.
Okay. Any questions of staff? Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on this fee schedule?
Seeing none, I would move to close the public hearing and approve the first and second readings of the ordinance updating the fee schedule for administration of official controls and adopt resolution approving the summary for publication.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. The next item, Mr. Getchow's 2018 fee schedule?
Yes, Mayor. So, these are the fees that are adopted by resolution, not the fees by ordinance. So, you know, if you think about, and again, in the packet, you can see these fees, these are fees related to administrative services, community center membership, fees by resolution. One thing we, we do do in Eden Prairie is we still hold a public hearing for fees by resolution. It's not required, but we've made the decision that all fees, whether it's franchise fees, fees by ordinance, building permit fees, community center fees, administrative fees, room rental fees, business license fees, that we provide all that information to the public ahead of time, and we hold a public hearing. So, those, all those proposed fees are in your packet as well, and the action is to adopt a resolution for the 2018 fee schedule.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions of staff on this fee schedule?
No.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address these fees that are by resolution?
Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing and adopt resolution approving the 2018 fee schedule.
Second. Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. The last public hearing is a special assessment for a fire protection system. Mr. Getchow?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is- This is not a typical item. This is a new item, a first-time item for Eden Prairie, and that is a voluntary special assessment for the installation of a fire suppression or sprinkler system. So our city and Fire Chief and Fire Department have been advocating for sprinkled buildings in Eden Prairie, and there's a program and statutory authority for a city, you know, similar to any other assessment that you would have, a utility assessment, a road assessment, have the ability with the cooperation of a property owner to assess the cost of a fire suppression system. In this case, the Assembly of God Church at 16591 Duck Lake Trail in Eden Prairie, you recall, is doing a major renovation for their church, and that's a project that came before you, I believe, a few council meetings back. Well, something they'd also like to do is retrofit their church with a sprinkler system, and they have worked with the city to approve and agree to a special assessment agreement for, they would pay the cost of their suppression system through their property taxes over a period of time with interest. And the fire inspector has approved the plans and specifications for the system that would be installed. The assessment would be paid over 20 years at 4.55% interest, and there would be a 5% administration fee. We are holding a public hearing for this as well, even though it's something that's been agreed to by the city and the church. We still agree to provide notice and hold a public hearing at our desire. And then the action tonight would be to adopt a resolution approving the assessment. So the city staff, Fire Chief, city attorney could answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Thank you. Questions? Councilmember Nelson.
I just have a statement a little more. I'd like to commend Assembly of God Church for deciding to make a safer building for their members and bring it up to date and as safe as can be. And I'm glad we have this program, and hopefully any other buildings that are in similar circumstances will consider it.
Good. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on this fire protection assessment? Hearing none, is there a motion?
I would move to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution approving this special assessment.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item is payment of claims. Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval?
Second. Any items to question? Roll call vote, please. Councilmember Aho?
Aye.
Councilmember Butcher-Wickstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Case?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Tyra Lukin?
Aye.
The next item is under ordinances and resolutions. It's the first reading of an ordinance amending franchise fees for XL Energy, CenterPoint Energy, and Minnesota Valley Electric Cooperative in the City of Eden Prairie. Mr. Getchow.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The action needed to alter the franchise fees are needed by ordinance, and we have franchise fee ordinance with both XL, CenterPoint, and Minnesota Valley Electric Cooperative. So to update those fees, the ordinance needs to be updated as well. This is a first reading of the ordinance. A second reading would come back at the January council meeting, so these will not take effect, these fee changes, until after second reading and probably sometime in mid-January of next year.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for staff? Is there a motion?
Move to approve the first reading of an ordinance amending franchise fees for XL Energy and approve the first reading of an ordinance amending franchise fees for CenterPoint Energy and approve the first reading of an ordinance amending franchise fees for Minnesota Valley Electric Cooperative.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, second.
You need a second.
Okay. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. The next item, we're getting into reports of council members. It's actually a presentation on the Highway 169 Mobility Study. It's a group that I've been working with as mayor and as representative of our city, and Adele Hall is here from SRF, who is going to do a presentation on what we've been working on.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. Do we have the presentation loaded? Thank you. So I'll give you some background on the Highway 169 Mobility Study that we've been working on now for over two years, and then I'll talk about the alternatives we considered and how they've been evaluated, and how the study will wrap up and next steps. So before this study got underway this year, there were really two key studies that took place. The first was a highway transway corridor study. This was led by Met Council, and they looked at highways all across the region for suitability for what they call highway bus rapid transit. And as part of that study, Highway 169 performed very well, excuse me, very well. Similarly, in the MinPass System Study Phase II, which was done by MINDOT in 2010, Highway 169 scored very well as a potential MinPass candidate. So these two studies really focused in the need to study 169 further for these two modes. Finally, Scott County also conducted their own Transit Need Study back in 2013, which gave rise in part to this study as well. Finally, in the 2040 Transportation Policy Plan, you'll see Highway 169 is in the increased revenue scenario for both bus rapid transit and for MinPass investment. So the study purpose is to identify and evaluate cost-effective options for Highway 169. These were limited to bus rapid transit, MinPass, and what we call spot mobility improvements. And spot mobility improvements are very localized changes to the highway infrastructure, often lower-cost solutions that are meant to kind of alleviate bottlenecks or congestion issues. And the scope of this project was limited because of those previous study efforts. We have three project sponsors, MINDOT, Met Council, Scott County, all contributed financially, as well as the Highway 169 Corridor Coalition and the cities of Shakopee and Prior Lake. The outcome of the study is intended to direct us on whether to advance a project, a MinPass project, a BRT project into the next level of engineering and design or environmental clearance, or whether specific spot mobility improvements should be integrated into MINDOT's program of projects, or if perhaps things need to be kind of packaged and readied, but sort of shelved until funds are available for the improvements. So we went through kind of a classic transportation planning process over the last couple of years. The first stage, of course, is setting our purpose and need for the project, and then moving into establishing a set of alternatives to evaluate, and these are both MinPass and BRT alternatives, and then developing those alternatives far enough and with enough detail so that we can evaluate them with a set of criteria that is related to the purpose and need for the project. And then finally, we're in stage four now of finishing up our evaluation of the alternatives and developing an implementation plan and next steps for the project. The decision-making throughout the study was done over three committees. First is a project management team, which is kind of a daily, day-to-day management of the study. Those are the two counties, Hennepin and Scott, as well as MINDOT and Met Council. We also had a technical advisory committee with, that included city staff in addition to the staff mentioned on the PMT, and Eden Prairie was represented on that group. And then we also have a policy advisory committee on which Mayor Tyra Lukin sits, and they provided overall direction for the study. There are six project goals, and these came out of the purpose and need for the project. And the purpose of the goals is really to set up the overall parameters for evaluating alternatives on Highway 169. So I will get into all of those rows of the table below shortly as we get into evaluation of the alternatives considered. So we have two alternatives that were considered for this project in detail. We started with the universe of alternatives, and it comes down to two BRT and MinPass alternatives. And this study is rather unique in that it combines the BRT and MinPass alternatives. They are one unit. So alternative one and alternative two, they share a MinPass alternative. The MinPass is on Highway 169 from Marshall Road up to the Betty Crocker Drive, or really the Highway 55 exit on Highway 169. And the first BRT alternative, or both BRT alternatives rather, also show that same stretch of Highway 169 from Marshall Road up to Betty Crocker Drive. Then the first BRT alternative would use Interstate 394 to head to downtown Minneapolis, and the second BRT alternative would use Highway 55 to head to downtown Minneapolis. You can see the station locations there. I would note of interest, since we are in Eden Prairie, the Viking Drive/Washington Avenue Station, it would be an offline station, so BRT buses would actually be on the bus-only shoulders, kind of similar to how express buses operate today. They would exit just south of 494 and use that series of roundabouts to come into the Golden Triangle and actually have a station just in the, kind of that southeast corner of the Golden Triangle area. Then the buses would go back across Highway 169 and then up to Valley View Road to get back on to the highway. The idea is, there's a robust service plan that supports the BRT improvement, and you know, this is all planning-level study, but the idea is that the BRT buses would meet with planned expansion to Southwest Transit Service as part of the Green Line LRT, that the buses would meet at that BRT station. So then, we, once we have those alternatives kind of defined, we move into evaluating them, and we go back to those six goals. And the first goal is to improve access, and this really gets at serving existing and also future employment centers, residents, destinations. So here, we're looking at how many residents, how many employment centers, how many jobs does the, do the alternatives serve? And we see that alternative one on 394 serves fewer residents but more jobs, and we see that it serves fewer employment centers but bigger employment centers. Alternative two is kind of the opposite, fewer employment served but more residents served. But really, they're still kind of in the same ballpark and universe here. The second goal is mobility, and this is really getting at some of the more MinPass-focused evaluation measures. So we're looking at really reducing congestion and improving person throughput on the highway. And here, we see very similar, very similar results for the two alternatives because the MinPass component of the alternatives is essentially exactly the same. And while they're the same between the two alternatives, it's also worth noting that these are pretty meaningful improvements in person throughput and reductions in delay. So we are seeing some return from that MinPass investment here. The third goal is more specific to the bus rapid transit investment, and this is about transit ridership and attracting people to the quality of service. And the station-to-station BRT ridership that we report there of 7,400 for alternative one and 6,600 for alternative two, this is the transitway ridership number that you probably are used to seeing reported, you've probably seen it for Southwest LRT. You know, it's, that's the kind of overall ridership number that's usually kind of used to represent a project. But we do like to break it out a little bit and get into those transit-dependent reverse-commute off-peak riders, start to see who is really planning or possibly going to use the service. We see more transit-dependent riders on alternative two. We see more reverse-commute riders on alternative two. We see more off-peak riders on alternative one. It's worth maybe noting that one single rider can be transit-dependent and be a reverse-commuter and be riding in the off-peak period, so those numbers aren't, don't sum to the overall ridership. Finally, the Federal Transit Administration, when they're counting ridership for a project like this, allows you to count ridership on express buses or other bus service that you, would use the enhanced infrastructure that would come with BRT. So that's what that 1,000 riders is. Those are people that aren't on the BRT service, they're on express buses, that are benefiting from BRT infrastructure. So that's how we come to that 8,400 or 7,600 guideway total. Then finally, that last line on this slide is getting at a question that popped up during this study, which is that we've seen some express buses that used to operate on Highway 169 have moved away from Highway 169 and are using 494, and this is because Highway 169 is so congested. And so we took a look and said, how many riders on those routes would move, would move back on to Highway 169 if MinPass were provided? And you could see an overall improvement in reliability on Highway 169. And we thought that would be around 2,500 riders that might experience that change and benefit. The fourth goal is, of course, focused on costs, and we've got capital costs and operating and maintenance costs for BRT. Capital costs are fairly low for a project like this. That represents a fairly minimal physical infrastructure investment. But you see, operating and maintenance costs of 16 and 1/2 to 17 million, that's pretty high, and that is partially because the line is so long. Marshall Road to downtown Minneapolis is a lot of miles. It's a long route for a bus. Longer routes equal more buses, more drivers, more stations, more operation and maintenance costs.
Excuse me, is that, so is that an annual amount? And is that all-inclusive to the buses themselves and all of the, all of the maintenance of the roadways and other things?
Certainly. Mayor, councilmember, the operations and maintenance cost is an annual cost, and it represents the cost of maintaining the bus fleet. It doesn't represent the cost of actually purchasing the fleet. That would fall under the capital cost for the project. But the operating and maintenance costs cover, you know, maintenance of the stations and the fleet and the BRT-related infrastructure. They don't cover operations and maintenance of the highway facility itself.
Thank you.
Yes. Finally, looking down at the cost range for the MinPass, and you see, there's a really large cost range there, 329 to 591 million. And that represents a MinPass option that would go from Marshall Road up to Betty Crocker Drive or Highway 55. And then the 591 million is with a, essentially a rebuild of the 169/394 interchange that would allow for a driver in the MinPass lane to go directly from a 169 MinPass onto a 394 MinPass. So you might imagine that that would involve a pretty extensive reconstruct of that interchange, and that's why the range is so great for the MinPass part of the alternatives. So we see that alternative one is slightly less expensive overall, but they are fairly The fifth goal is about transit supportive conditions, and this is trying to get at what, really what cities are doing to prepare for transit service. And I think in Eden Prairie, you guys are probably very familiar with this from your planning on the Green Line extension. But here, because the two alternatives share so much of the alignment, we're really looking at Golden Valley and St. Louis Park because they are the difference between the 394 and the 55 alternative. And here, we found that St. Louis Park perhaps had slightly more transit supportive policies, and again, maybe from their planning for Southwest LRT. But we also found that the conditions around 394 might be much harder to retrofit than the conditions around Highway 55 to try to make them more friendly to transit riders and transit-oriented type development. I think that's especially true on Louisiana Avenue. So overall, we found that there's not a ton of daylight between the two cities in this regard for the two alternatives. Finally, the last goal is to preserve the environment, and here, we're doing essentially a very high-level scan of the types of considerations that you would do for an environmental clearance document. We check, you know, we check for hazardous material sites, we look for noise and vibration-sensitive receptors, we're looking at cultural and historic resources, again, just kind of checking the physical locations of those things throughout the corridor. Because this corridor would be almost entirely within existing transportation right-of-way, we found very little chance that there would be... we found very little chance that there would be environmental impacts, both to the natural or man-made environment. One thing that does fall under this goal, too, is serving environmental justice populations, which the Federal Transit Administration defines as low-income and/or minority populations. And we did find that Alternative 2 serves greater numbers of minority and low-income populations. So overall, we see both alternatives are fairly viable. We have no red dots. We have no kind of glaring worries about either alternative. Alternative 2 does edge Alternative 1 a bit on some of our evaluation measures. And coming out of this evaluation, we had our technical advisory committee was prepared to and recommended Alternative 2 to be carried forward, and they liked that Alternative 2 served more environmental justice populations. They liked that Alternative 2 has more stations and therefore more opportunity for development around those stations, and they felt that Highway 55 was just overall maybe a slightly better environment for running BRT service. That said, the policy advisory committee was not quite ready to take that recommendation and carry it forward. They were, kind of saw that both alternatives were viable, and essentially welcomed a process like this of going out to city council members and kind of discussing the project overall before the policymakers made any or took an action on the preferred alternative. So that's kind of where things sit. We did do some additional analysis on Alternative 2, and we call this kind of optimizing or sensitivity tests. And basically, what we do is, we test the, what happens to the ridership and the cost of a project if we change some variables about it. So in this case, we took out a few stations, and we reduced the service a bit. It was planned to operate every 10 minutes in the peak periods. We reduced that to 15 minutes in the peak periods, just to see what happens to the cost and the ridership. And overall, actually, we saw that the ridership stayed about the same, and we were able to reduce capital and operating costs of it. So we call this an optimized alternative, and it's one that we would carry into an implementation plan. So the implementation plan is the next and final step of the project, and really, we take our optimized BRT scenario, we take the MinPass plan, and we look at those spot mobility improvements, and we look at the overall funding landscape. We're looking for kind of, okay, what's the ultimate vision for the Highway 169 corridor? And then what are all of the interim steps that we need to take to get there? And you might imagine with kind of three different infrastructure-type investments in the corridor, there are lots of kind of ways to get there. So that's what the implementation plan is all about. The last piece that I will discuss is kind of building the transit market in this corridor. You know that there's lots of express bus service in the corridor today, but there's not much in terms of local service or anything that's close to station-to-station type BRT service. So there's going to have to be some interim steps to start building that market, and that's one of the key facets of the implementation plan. The other piece is just starting to build up the highway and transit infrastructure, getting those potential station areas ready for people to walk to them, to bike to them, maybe for higher-density development around those stations. I think these are things you're very familiar with after Green Line LRT planning. So those are some next steps. More immediately, there are a few actions that you, as a council, might take around this project. You can do nothing, of course. That's always an option. Another option would be to, you know, pass a resolution generally supporting BRT and MinPass in the 169 corridor, or you could pass a resolution in support of Alternative 1 or Alternative 2. Obviously, the choice is entirely up to you. This presentation is just informational, but I thought I would lay out those paths forward. We are looking to wrap up the study here in the next probably three, four months, so we'll have an implementation plan soon.
Thank you, Adele.
Thank you.
Questions? Councilmember Aho?
Have you guys been working with Southwest Transit at all to kind of look at how this might impact Southwest Transit Service? Serving on the board there, I have a keen interest in how this might impact their service. And then also, I assume that this would be, this service would be operated by Met Council's buses and Metro Transit, and is that what you're thinking?
Mayor and councilmember Aho, the question of operator has not been answered, and really has, I think, all of the transit providers have been at the table. Southwest Transit, Metro Transit, MBTA, and Plymouth MetroLink have all participated in the study and kind of agreed not to visit the question of who would operate the project. It's just, it's so early on. I think once things were to advance into a preliminary engineering or environmental document phase, then those conversations would begin.
Perfect. Thank you.
One of the things that we were interested in, though, was your sense of what Alternative 1 or 2 is the best. You might not have any strong feelings because the analytics kind of show them to be pretty similar in terms of performance, but the group is leaning towards Alternative 2 down Highway 55. Do you have any concerns about that?
So let me follow up on councilmember Aho, if I can. So the purpose of this presentation really is to present the concept of the corridor, conceivably Southwest Transit or whatever could run their buses, but the corridor would need to be built. I guess my question, following up to yours, Brad, would be looking at the ridership currently of Southwest Transit. Are we cannibalizing kind of a same group of people? They're heading down to Minneapolis.
That's kind of what I was asking.
And to me, they go more efficiently, I think, more efficiently right now. I haven't really looked at a map, but it seems like going way up to 55 and then over. So would we not be drawing any, and therefore, are there any Eden Prairie people? If you're trying to get to Minneapolis, you're going to take Southwest Transit down its route right now, yet you've looked at some potential numbers. I don't know if that impacts Eden Prairie, but I guess those are questions I can compartmentalize and sidetrack for later. I definitely, from what you presented, would favor Alternative 2, to your point. At this early stage, I just would want a lot more questions before we did some kind of a resolution. What's the need for the people we represent? What's the impact? What, all that, yeah.
I feel the same way.
Yeah. Alternative 2 is attractive to the whole group because of the fact that it has a potential to pick up a lot of people for the reverse commute, to get them out to jobs out down the 169 corridor. That was a really important aspect of it. And really, in terms of Southwest Transit, the alternative, or the reverse commute that they have done has been from right downtown where our express buses go and bringing people out, not collecting them along 312 or collecting them along 55. So it's a little bit different purpose, and I don't think that there's a whole lot of fear from Southwest Transit people that this was going to cannibalize it. Nonetheless, the issue of who's going to provide the service has not been addressed.
I also think this is a good way to get some people south of the river onto transit and maybe out of the way of some people who are moving or businesses that are trying to move their trucks or whatever up the system. And a lot of them don't have as many options as maybe you do with Southwest Transit or whatever. So I think, too, you know, it does have a few more good things for it. Highway 52 does have some access from a variety of people that may not have other access, and it goes both ways. It's just like the Green Line. It doesn't just go one way, it goes both ways. There's a lot of jobs out here.
Definitely. Well, think about these alternatives and think about the possibility of whether or not you want to pass some kind of a resolution supporting the work of the group, if you want to endorse a specific alternative, and we could maybe do that at our meeting in January if you're interested in doing that.
I think I'd be interested in supporting it. I think it's a good improvement to the system, and I think we need to all work together and appreciate all the work that you guys have done on this project, and I think it's important to show support from a city perspective, and I would love to see that.
At the end of the day, we may need all of it. I mean, if you look at the projected population numbers in 30 years, we need LRT, we'll need Southwest Transit, we may need these additional corridors, so, yeah.
Good analysis, though. I really appreciate hearing it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Adele.
My pleasure.
Thanks. All right, no action is required. We'll discuss it, and I think we've kind of gotten your feedback, Brad, and I think everybody else seemed to be in agreement. Maybe we could do something at our next meeting in January. Councilmember Case, you have something else to report on?
Yes, I have two very quick points. One is that, as we all know and everyone listening tonight, Eden Prairie football team won the state championship, which raised the question to me of thinking about the small-town field, which we often try to accomplish here in Eden Prairie. And if we were in a small town, this would be plastered over our water tower. I'm not suggesting that, but I am suggesting...
A parade?
But I am suggesting the idea of going back to maybe what I know other cities have done, but I feel like what we've done in the past as well, when some team, some math league, something at the high school or any other school won a fairly large state or national award, bringing them into the council chambers, recognizing them, making it Eden Prairie Football Team Day, whatever, that kind of a thing. And I thought maybe having Cherry, because you serve on the, I think, the facilities committee, but I think they address other issues, I think, as well. If not, maybe there's another vehicle forum that we could do that. But I just think anytime the city shines, we become, you know, number one in Money Magazine, that benefits the school district. Anytime the football team wins, that benefits the city because people move into our houses, our house prices go up, our tax base improves. So I just feel like there's a missing celebratory something in there that we didn't do anything with the football team, and I would just like going on forward just to have that relationship connection, and I'm not sure how we bridge that with the school district. So just compartmentalize that, put that away, but that was a thought.
Well, it's not too late, is it?
No, well, actually, it's not. We can do something in January.
It's their 11th, the 11th title.
Let's make some reaching-out-to-them connections and bring them in here in January and call it Eden Prairie, you know, Football Team Day and Mike Grant Day, whatever.
Football Team.
Well, Mike Grant deserves a little bit of the credit here as well. The second thing, just real quickly, is that down Flying Cloud Drive, when all the construction was going on and they did the artifact research, historical research, and they discovered down west of Lines Tap massive amounts of artifacts that now are being stored, I guess, at the Minnesota Historical Society, but I know that various groups in our city, the Historical Society, the Heritage Preservation, they've all seen these artifacts. It was never presented here, I believe, unless I've missed a meeting.
No, it wasn't.
And I think either at a workshop or at a meeting like this that's on TV, we need to have a presentation given to us of what they found of our Eden Prairie thing. It's incredible. I mean, I've not seen them, but I've heard of what they were, and it's pretty amazing. And again, it was Native American artifacts found on our soil that are now taken out of our city and housed somewhere else, but at least to have that presentation given to us. Somehow, we got missed, and everyone else, it seems like, around us got given this presentation. So those were my two points I wanted to bring up tonight.
That would be really interesting to hear what they have to say, even if they can't bring artifacts in, if they could do pictures.
Oh, I think they can.
I think they can, too, and we've got...
We'll line up the football team to carry the artifacts.
That's fine.
I do like that you said, though, it should be more than just sports, the robotics team, the math teams.
Totally. It's just celebrating, it's celebrating us, you know, Eden Prairie and the high school and CMS. I mean, that's so much a part of us, and what's happening with the school system, the board's celebrating, that's great. We ought to also, and vice versa, and so, okay.
Good idea.
Okay, anything else to bring before the council? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Leading adjourned.
Mike? Don't you have to go to work? Mike? Honey? Are you listening to me? Mike, get up!